June 26, 2024, meeting of the Committee of the Hold of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence to order. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Jesus.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, I ask for strength, understanding, and carriage for everyone as we do your work. Heavenly Father, bestow your blessings on all who hear your name. Keep a hedge of protection around us as we go out into the vineyards to do your work, and speak to your people. Let those who speak tonight be heard with understanding and direction. Heavenly Father, let the words of my mouth and the meditation of my heart be acceptable in thy sight. These and other blessings I ask in your darling son's name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Do we have a quorum? Yes, we do have a quorum. Yes, we do have a quorum. Let the record reflect that we do have a quorum. Thank you. Unfinished business? We have none. New business? First is Proposal 8, number 8, 2024. Would you please read, Madam Clerk, please read the title of the proposal into the record?
President Robinson, I can go ahead and read it. It is an ordinance of the Common Council, the City of Lawrence, Indiana, amending Title 5, Article 2, Chapter 3, Section 4 of the Municipal Code Regarding Solid Waste Collection and Disposal User Fees.
Okay. At the June... Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Attorney? At the June 3, 2024 council meeting, this proposal was referred to the Committee for Consideration and Recommendations. It is my understanding that since the introduction of this proposal, an amendment is being proposed to the committee this evening. I also understand that the proposed amendments are not to the detriment of the public. Mr. Lovell, are you prepared to present the proposed amendment to the committee?
Yes, Madam Clerk. Is this just the amendment to the proposal that we'll be speaking on? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so actually, there's two. There's some iterations that go throughout the entire ordinance, particularly Section F. Just add more clarification to qualified replacement of containers, and then also to implementation, the final act for the council to move forward, implementation on July 2nd, and then the additional annual second implementation on January 2nd of 2025. The reason for that is the billing cycle with Lawrence Utilities. After speaking with Lawrence Utility, they recommend to move that just another day, just a day over, just to make sure that that's the appropriate billing cycle. The last thing we want is certain residents receiving this implementation right now, and then others will see it until August. With this, all implementation will happen in August. So I just want to bring that attention to you all, and after speaking with them last week, we just want to make sure that's clarified with the council. And I believe your Scott has presented the red lines, so you all make sure you have the most updated information.
Council President, may I ask a question, please?
Yes, ma'am.
So in looking at this, we're going to go from 1494 to 1633 on a scale. Was there... Are we confident that we have what we need year over year? Was there any thought given in like, say, for instance, with the 12-1 through the 11-30 and the 12-1 through the 11-30-26, just going the 90 cents?
You know, there was a different iterations. One that we initially thought of is just simply raising it by $1, and then year after, make it a couple of dollars after. There was a lot of iterations that we could have went along with. I think just simply raising the base to meet the service of the contract. The base alone will move it up, will meet and get us back in the green essentially financially, and then the 60 cents year after will make sure that there's room for inflationary costs, but also the cost of service. And then after the five years or even up to eight years, if we decide to move on with a different vendor, then that leaves the city in a much better place financially. So, you know, there was multiple conversations. Ultimately, after conversation with DPW and the Controller's Office, we feel like this minimum adjustment was the best course of action. And I don't know, Madam President, if you want me to go forward with my presentation, I didn't want to get ahead of you.
You can move forward.
Okay, sorry. I didn't want to... So councils in the public as well, you all have a PowerPoint presentation essentially outlining the requests from the administration. And before I get deep into that, I just want to tell you how this came about, right? October of last year, the previous administration executed a contract with priority waste, and during the transition of the Whitfield administration, we were informed that they did not seek a rate adjustment with the council, and that it will be necessary for us, the administration, at some point to seek that adjustment in order to shore up potential budgetary shortfalls, which we are seeing, and we are seeking your recommendation to shore up those shortfalls. What we're simply asking is to meet the cost of service for this new contract with priority waste, add additional protections for the city and for the public in terms of financial, and having some more long-term planning for whatever future contracts the sanitation may have in the future. And if you look on page 1 of the PowerPoint, it just gives you a straight timeline in history of what the Board of Works and the Review Committee conducted regarding the selection, the request for proposal, and how many bidders applied for the sanitation contract with the City of Lawrence. Some of you may or may not know that we previously had Republic Trash Service as a contract for 10 years, and that contract was up, and then we decided, excuse me, the city opened up for bid, and ultimately, priority waste was selected. And so in the selection in terms on the second page, there was a series of metrics and scoring that was conducted by the Review Committee. There were a number of criteria that was examined, but most importantly, what was outlined was the customer service and cost of service. Those are the two most important ones when determining that. And if you... I believe I sent you all an email regarding your colleagues' scoring regarding that. You know, some of them were, you know, the vendor's qualification, operational plan and equipment, if they qualify as a minority business, or how they provide customer service, and also, too, public engagement was a very strong aspect of how they will inform the public regarding operational things that were happening in their neighborhood, make sure they keep them informed. But ultimately, top marks were awarded for customer service and their ability to respond to residents regarding issues with trash and things like that, and ultimately, how much it would cost to the city to provide that service. Priority Waste outscored other bidders and was the lowest bidder that submitted a contract. Currently, the contract duration is about five years. It ends on November 30th in 2028. There is an option to review for additional three years. That rate will continue. There's an outline in the contract what those rates will be like, but they're basically stagnant. It's basically continuing the same. Those base rate mainly factors in annual inflationary costs and the cost of service, mostly fuel and potential salaries that is associated with the services they provide to the city. As you can see from the bottom, this is the current rate, and the future rates will be applied based off the contract. It's about 45 cents to 50 cents every year moving forward, and if the city decides to opt for the eight-year, renew for three years, up to eight years, you will see the base as of November 2031 to be $17.85. Moving on, you know, as I mentioned before, you know, City Lawrence did have a solid waste rate, a flat rate for 10 years when it was Republic Service, and that ended last year. And, you know, last year, the city did not seek a rate adjustment after awarding the trash contract to Priority Waste and failing to make budgetary adjustments to meet those costs of service. And so today, we're asking you to make those adjustments as well. On Slide 4, I believe, you see the current ordinance outline regarding some of the rates and what the previous council in 2013 outlined in their ordinance. Right now, it's $15 per month for each household. Seniors currently get a 40% discount, and the trash or, excuse me, the toters slash containers are $1.25 per month. That is the current rate. If you look at the proposed rate of the next page, there are a series of adjustments, right? The rate that we are proposing is $17.50 per month. There shall be an increase by 60 cents effective January 2nd of each year thereafter. There will be a, just a flat $5 discount for seniors of the regular rate, but there's also some additional verification and water usage that we are going to tie to the senior rate discount, mainly the maximum 7,500 gallons of usage in that household, and then they are not eligible for extra containers. The reason for that is Lawrence Utility that processes the users' fees for disposal of trash is Lawrence Utilities Water Meters can measure the water usage in each household, and it's, on average, every household here, or a person, averages about 2,500 gallons a person in their home, how much water they use. And seniors across the board produce less waste, they produce less trash, produce less water. And that is another way for the city to have some type of enforcement and verification that, yes, seniors are utilizing that, and Lawrence Utility can pretty quickly verify or can kind of see if there's, essentially, you know, you're living with grandma, it's a house full of kids, and they're utilizing that, and utilizing a lot of water in the household. It's just another way to kind of protect the city, to make sure that individuals who are utilizing the senior discount are for those who qualified, and to make sure there are some guardrails to make sure there are verification processes that we can move forward with. Also, too, the same way with trash, seniors typically use less trash, and so therefore, they're not eligible for extra toters. They still get the standard trash toter and the recycle as well. Additionally, and I'll talk more about the spring cleanup and trash pickup, but essentially, trash disposals will be, heavy trash disposals will be free for spring and fall. Three bulk items, actually, we just had one from May 6th through the 10th, and then we'll have one in the fall. And I'll explain more why that change was necessary. And then additionally, the extra container toters will now be $4 per month, and that's based on the contract, and I will show some numbers where we just simply want to kind of cut ourselves out of that transaction. And then now, too, you get two additional toters, either two extra trash or two extra recycle, whichever choice you want to move forward with that. So a maximum of four that Priority Waste will pick up every week. So if you see the cost comparison on the next page, you can see currently how the base rate is set up, and now with the contract, the city is losing money on that, about $12,000 a month if we continue on for the rest of the year. If we continue at the current projection, it will be about $147,000 by the end of the year. But with the updated base rate change to $17.50, excuse me, and with the adjusted senior discount, the city will kind of be back in the green a little bit to make sure that we're able to sustain ourselves long-term. And there's a lot of numbers there, and the City of Lawrence, excuse me, Priority Service about 13,000 homes, about, give or take 2,000 homes utilize the senior discount. That change, you know, with people move, every quarter, we do an audit with Priority to make sure what households are needing of service, especially when people move or people are no longer here with us. And so there is a constant audit to make sure those numbers are lined up. We do the same thing for trash containers as well. We do an annual audit to make sure that we have an accurate number of residents who are utilizing the toters that they need, especially if they're paying for them. If you go to the next page, again, and this is kind of really shows where that drop-off is regarding extra totes or containers. The old rate of $1.25, the city is really losing money on that on a monthly basis, long-term, if we continue on an annual basis. And then if we expect, and the projection, we think about 2,500 households utilize extra toters, that is a large sum, monthly about $6,000 the city is right now compensating for those households. And if we just simply raise it to the $4, what the Priority Waste contract outlines that, that essentially kind of takes us out of that and just kind of makes it even for the city. So, next page, and this is just a proposal snapshot of everything. $2.50 solid waste base rate adjustment, gone from $15 to $17.50. As I mentioned before, it needs to be implemented by July 2nd. We're essentially utilizing the budget of the entire year for solid waste to cover the first six months for the most part. And so it's really important that the council move forward with that, so by the end of the year, we don't have to come to the council for additional appropriations or anything like that to make sure we shore up the end of that budget. And then moving forward, just to make sure we can stay ahead of inflation, but also, too, the terms of the contract, there will be 60 cent annual rate adjustments on all service properties, and this is just for the cost of service and inflation, and that implementation will happen on January 2nd of '25 and then thereafter. Mentioned before, it will be a $5 discount for seniors of the regular rate, so if the council decides to move forward with that, that new rate for seniors will be $12.50. As I mentioned before, verification and water usage through Lawrence Utility, and not eligible for extra toters. And then, as prementioned before, $1.25, $4 per month for extra toter, a maximum of four toters, two trash, two recycle. Also, I want to mention something about the trash disposal, heavy trash disposal changes. Under the previous Republic contract, heavy trash was offered once a month for one item to every household. I believe it's the third month, third week of the month, if I remember correctly, and spring cleanup was part of that as well. You can have up to five additional items to dispose. Under the current Priority Waste contract, heavy trash is limited to the leisure of the resident, meaning if you have a couch or mattress that you want to dispose of, you can bring it to our, the spring or fall cleanup for free at no charge, or if you need, or if you're moving or you need to get rid of it, you can have requests through Priority directly that you are removing this item, but that is $10 per item, and Priority, you have to go to Priority directly to make that request. And so the justification for that, and if you can see at the bottom here, is when the city was negotiating with contract and vendor, they indicated that maintaining a once-a-month heavy trash and spring cleanup could cost residents an additional $10 per month. Reporting showed that residents didn't use the monthly heavy trash pickup as much, but they did utilize the spring cleanup, and it's a free cost, you just go to a location or they come to your neighborhood. Usually in May, we just had one. And actually, we just got a report from Priority Waste of the tonnage report, and it did show in May was the most with the people dumped. And so the data showed pretty consistently that in the spring and the fall, when people are throwing things away, they typically do around that time. I don't think every month someone's throwing out a chair or a mattress, but typically, when people are moving or when, you know, it gets kind of that spring clean time, people kind of get rid of some of their heavy trash and things like that. So therefore, the city decided to offer a trash collection service in the spring and fall with a limit of three items each time. Additionally, residents can dispose heavy trash items at their convenience by paying the contractor $10 per item directly. And so if the council decides to move forward with this rate adjustment, as I mentioned before, these are some of the implementations that the residents could be adjusting to. On July 2nd, if the council decides to move forward, regular service properties could see a total adjustment of about $15 this year. That's about $2,050 for the next six months, and that does not include extra toters. So it all depends if you have extra toters in your home and how that's factored into your monthly Lawrence Utility bill. Seniors will discount, and that adjustment, they'll probably see about $21 adjustment of this year, starting in January 2nd of next year. That 60 rate increase will be applied to all service properties, and so they probably see an annual about $7.20 adjustment next year alone. And then, as I mentioned before, extra toters will go from $1.25 to $4 with a maximum extra toters, two extra toters per household, and mentioned before, seniors will not be eligible for those extra toters. The administration, we're seeking a minimum rate adjustment to meet the service of the contract. We're not trying to bring in extra money to fund certain things or fund departments and anything like that. This is something that we, as a responsible city, have to move forward with, and in order to do that, this is something we necessarily have to move forward with. But also, too, additionally, you know, administration does have the prerogative to impose administrative fee. That is something we're not going to do. It is totally zero cost, I mean, zero applied administrative fee, and that's something we are not going to do. I think it's very important that the governing body, the fiscal body of the city, has a say in that matter, and that's why we present this to you all today. And with that, and my colleague Christopher, have you got anything else to add?
Thank you, sir.
Wonderful job, wonderful presentation. The only thing I have to add is that also included in this rate adjustment is, I think, Christmas tree disposal from December 26th through January the 31st. So I think it's important for the Common Council to understand, too, that these rate, this rate adjustment is both, is not only equitable, but it also puts the City of Lawrence at a place in a position in which the, that we're growing at the rate in which we're growing in terms of our citizen acquisition. With that being said, we believe that Priority has maintained the professional image, and one of the challenges that we had with Republic was that they were utilizing rusted, very dilapidated equipment and picking up our refuse, whereas in other surrounding cities, they were using brand-new trucks, and there was very little leakage on the roads, and we have been very, very clear of our expectation as an administration, but more importantly, our expectations as citizens and advocacy for citizens. So although these rates seem a little bit pinchy, and I say pinchy because no one likes to see their services increased, we believe that these are the equitable terms and the lowest numbers that we can provide our citizens without sticker shock. If that makes sense.
I had a comment. It was a question, but I had a comment now. I want to just say thank you for making the point about the trucks, because by time being on the council, the only real complaint that I've had about trash was the nasty leaking trucks, leaving trash juice all down the road, and, you know, and it was really terrible. So I think for our average citizen, a couple of extra bucks just to keep the juice, trash juice off the road is a sell, is a sell point. I do have one other concern. I have one other concern. How do we address the situation, not know if it's a landlord, move out, whatever, where they leave everything on the curb? I just don't want to see stuff sitting in my neighborhood forever.
Counselor, you raised a very good question, and one which we have as a team in DPW are very well aware of. Although this may not be an appropriate body or appropriate setting to bring up, it is directly correlated to this, to this very issue. So what we are seeing is there is a high percentage of renters in particular areas, and when those renters leave, they, as you stated, Counselor, they dispose the trash and bulky trash, mattresses, et cetera, refrigerators as well, and then the city has to encumber those costs to remove. As a remedy, what we've been discussing, and what I'm proposing and what I'm creating, is a landlord registry in which we can hold those landlords responsible for, in fact...
Can I talk to you about that?
Yeah, we've, we've...
I sponsored that bill already.
Okay.
I did it years ago. Well, in my, it wasn't just the residents' complaint, my board attacked us.
Well, there's a different way. We can do this differently, and the language will be such that it, again, it's how DPW will craft the language and the messaging. What we don't want to do is ostracize, eliminate, and prohibit people from moving into the City of Lawrence if they want to be good citizens.
We can consider adding a large trash removal, bulk trash removal into our fleet, putting that into the budget and...
We've talked about that as well, Counselor. Here's the challenge.
You know, I got something to say about the budget up here.
And we're grateful.
I think that makes more sense, because here's the problem with the landlord registry that I did agree with. What are you going to do, hire somebody else to manage it?
Well, no. The thing is, there are different remedies, and this isn't tangential, this is very, very related. There are mechanisms within DPW that we aren't utilizing as it relates to code enforcement or ordinance and zoning, et cetera. So we're examining that. We're doing a comprehensive, top-to-bottom examination of how we conduct ourselves within the context of DPW, and how we utilize the mechanisms and tools that this body creates as it relates to ordinances and zoning, et cetera. What we found is that not only is this trash collection and waste flat, so are our additional mechanisms by which to operate to enforce zoning and coding. So the bulky items, although we have entered into an agreement with Priority, the modification will have to be done at a separate, a separate venue or separate time. What we are seeing and what we see, there is only a fraction of people within the context of the community that abuse that which we're talking about, bulky items and throwing things, et cetera, without communicating with previously Republic or now Priority. So what we find, the people who are in, who are in, on the wrong side of history or breaking the law are typically the renters, and typically those who are just trying to get out of that, they're very transient, they leave the bulky items there, and then we, as a city, have to pay for it. So you raised a good point. We're discussing that. We have a transparent team. We can be in contact with you directly to kind of craft language that is not only acceptable for the council, but also digestible for our citizens.
I agree with that, and you made a good point. I just have one other deal.
Yes, sir.
When do most people move, renters?
They're being evicted.
Right now.
Yeah.
So while you're figuring it out, I just don't want my neighborhood to bulk up with stuff between now and October 1st.
You're exactly right.
Because that's when most... So I just hope that we can maybe have a short-term solution...
Right.
And then a long-term solution before I have that, and then also bulky trash leads to mosquito and mosquitoes.
You're right. I think what I'm hearing and what I'm sensing from you two, Counselor, is the frustration. We understand the frustration, and not only are you frustrated and those whom you represent, but we are frustrated as well within the context of DPW.
I've been frustrated about a lot of things I couldn't fix. I just hope you can fix them.
Yeah, and I think that that's a collaborative approach. What we've done is, here's what we've done. We've implored Priority, and you may not know this, Mr. Andre, I mean Lovell, mentioned it, we actually asked Priority to provide tonnage in terms of like, what are we collecting as a city? And then we're going to do a public campaign in which you say, here's how to reduce some waste, or here's how to... So we're not only addressing the root cause, but we're also providing remedies, and those remedies include an adjustment. Those remedies also include education. Those remedies also include responsible landlord leasing, because that's all it is. People cannot afford to maybe live the way we live, and we don't want to push people away who are, who can be good citizens, but we also want to make sure that the City of Lawrence maintains its rating and that we improve that rating. And so that's our overarching goal, Counselor, but you raised some really good points, and we're talking about those things as a team, both internally and to the administration.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor.
Great answers.
Council President, can someone speak on yard waste?
Specifically?
Yeah.
Specifically, or you mean just in general?
No, specifically as it relates to this new contract, because that is a pain point.
Could you give me an example, because I may, I'm assuming...
So grass clippings, leaves.
Okay, good. So, yes.
You've got 60 bags now.
Yes, so, and that's, so within the context of the contract that we went, that we went through with Priority, and I'll read Page 7, Section C as in Charles, "The contractor shall collect up to 15 bags per residential unit per month in the months of April and November each year. Any yard waste beyond the 15 bags per residential unit per month in April and through November may be collected by a contractor..." may be collected by a contractor as solid waste in the approved containers. Contractor," that means a second, you know what that means, "shall make every reasonable effort to dispose of yard waste in an environmentally friendly manner such as composting, chipping, or mulching." Now, here's where the power of the DPW comes into play, is that you have enabled us as a DPW to go out and then enforce through codes, code ordinances. Unfortunately, and this is, this is, this is not hearsay, this is unfortunate, there's only one individual code enforcement officer we have employed at the city right now. So the first thing that I did was made an assessment, I made recommendations, and we're moving those forward to increase, counselor, our code enforcement arm, not to browbeat citizens or our community, not to punish them in punitive gestures by giving them tickets, et cetera, but create a standard by which everybody feels comfortable with. So although it's spelled out in the contract in terms of yard waste collection, we understand too that there are tall grass, there are leaves, people blow their leaves in the winter in the streets, that's completely unacceptable. So we have, within the context of DPW, a mechanism by which to grab those kind of isolated incidents and make people, and make people own, have some onus of responsibility, but unfortunately, it's only one particular enforcement officer. So we've been in conversations of increasing that arm of DPW as well. Does that answer your question?
But I'm, I'm hearing like two things. I'm hearing, you know, a couple of my peers say it's 60 bags per year, but I heard you say 15 bags per month, so that math isn't mathing for me.
At a particular time, so you said April, April to November, 15 bags per residential unit per month. So let's do the math on that. If you have how many toters total?
That's 90.
Huh?
You said 15 from April to November?
Yes, ma'am.
That's April, May, June, July.
And let's do the maximum of four toters. Remember, Leandre said you're going to have two toters for recycling and two toters for regular refuse, like regular trash. So if we do the maximum, that means that that's 30 bags per residential unit. Units, by definition of this contract, considered toters. Am I correct in that assessment? So therefore, that number balloons to 30. So you're saying, I'm saying that the contractor shall collect up to, up to 15 bags per residential unit per month in the months of April and November each year. So April and November...
Yeah, that's eight months.
So that's 30 bags, so that's not 15. It's, if a resident has one toter, that's 15, but we can, we're allowing up to that maximum number, if that makes sense.
So I have two toters, I can have, I can have 30 bags.
Yes, ma'am.
A month.
That's what this language says.
So what does this language mean? For each household that exceeds 60 bags of yard waste in a year, there should be an additional fee of $2.
So if you look at it, so let's look at 60 bags. What they're saying is you have two units, two units here, this is one toter, imagine another toter similarly. So within those two toters, that's 30, 30 bags per month. What Priority is saying is that we are going to honor that, but anything above that number, you're responsible for.
So can my folks, when you talk about the toter again, so can somebody do the regular layout, put out?
Before we could put the bags, before, under our old contract, we did not have to put our leaves and our grass clippings inside the toter. We could actually put them next to the toter, and they would just pick them up.
And that's what this says as well.
Okay.
So when you start saying toters, we're getting confused, because we're thinking you want us to put the leaf bags inside the toter.
No, let me be clear. Toter and bags are two separate items.
Yes.
Bags is what I was referring to, and I'm sorry for the confusion.
That's okay.
And I apologize that I wasn't clear. Bags are completely different than toter. So that's a very good, and thank you for bringing that up, because if you're confused, then the public could probably confuse you.
Yeah.
So I totally get it, and thank you for bringing that up. So the toters, you are allowed to put your regular refuse in that, in those, in those things. And then additionally, you can also put up to 15 bags per unit or toter, per toter.
Per month.
Okay, I see what you're saying, so one toter gets 15 bags.
Yes, sir.
Per month, two toters gets 30 bags.
That's exactly right. And here's the reason why, and this is, this goes in line with what Deputy Chief of Staff was trying to articulate. The cost of removing refuse, burning refuse, taking that refuse and dumping it, because we, apparently, we've done a lot of that other, there's quite a bit of that going on before Priority came. The goal then, counselor, then, is to make sure that not only that we, as a community, we educate the community in terms of collecting their trash and refuse, and that during those periods from April to November, that they're, they're like, hey, look, I can put up to 30 bags if I have two toters. And that's quite a lot of, of green and grass shavings and leaves, that's, that's quite a bit. And it doesn't really specify if you're talking large trash bags or industrial-sized bags. That's maybe a workaround, but it doesn't really specify.
I just want to make sure they pick it up, because I got one concern about the two toters, I'm sorry to make this a big deal, but...
Not as important stuff.
Picture my neighborhood over, you know, I got a lot of seniors that got three-quarter acre yards with five oak trees, you know, in it, and they only got one toter. I mean, those are my, those are the people that's picking up all the yard. To really be honest with you, it's my seniors that are out there raking that yard and making it pretty and everything. So I'm saying, I could think of my, some of my dog walking guys, it's just, you know...
And you raise a good point too, counselor, I'm sorry.
There is also down the road that we could change the way we dispose of things such as leaves, there are, that they do not have to be put out as yard waste, such as composting and leave the leaves, and we might start examining that, and that would help reduce just something, not to get off the topic, but we don't need to be throwing away so much of this, these leaves, so.
Thank you, counselor. And to your point, counselor, we have discussed that as well in meeting with you, but more importantly, even before that, that was one of the reasons why we chose Priority, because what we, what we're trying to ultimately accomplish is simple. And we know we don't have a lot of time, I don't know how long I'll be in this role, I would want to stay forever, but by, with the time that I've been allotted, we have to act on the best interest of our citizens. We have to make decisions at a split second sometimes, and sometimes we have a longer opportunity to kind of do some planning and strategy work. But what we want to accomplish is a community that is both beautified, that is sustainable both for us now and for the future, and that we're doing and acting in a very, very judicious manner and not frivolous with the taxpayers' money. And you mentioned that too, Leandre. So to your point, counselor, what we've been discussing too is that public education campaign, and I mentioned it vaguely too, counselor, and that is going to really, really turn for the good for our community, because then they become more engaged with city government, and we can become more engaged with them as it relates to DPW. But you raise a very good point, and these are things that we're not discussing for many, many years out. We're incorporating those kinds of concepts into what we do and decisions that we make today.
So can you guys address C, because I still feel like it's not addressed. It says for each household, so it's not saying toter or anything like that, it says for each household that exceeds 60 bags of yard waste in a year, there shall be an additional $2 per bag. So I'm concerned about that, because I'm going to tell you, I can hit 60 bags in two months.
Yeah, she's got some big trees in her.
She's got some big trees, huh?
Yeah, so I can hit 60 bags in two months. I'm concerned that after that second month, I'm now paying $2 per bag.
The challenge that we have to, and thank you for bringing that up, in that scenario, the challenge that we have is this four corners of this contract. So we're bound by the four corners of this contract to not only, adherence isn't a proper word, but we have to be reasonable in our approaches and how we're interacting with Priority. So to your point, so when we say 15 bags of trash, and we can hammer this out as long as you like, because I want there to be clarity in what we're discussing here this evening. I understand that scenario and that illustration, but that's not the norm. That's, that's, that's not, your situation and your illustration, although valid, is not the norm. What we've had to do, counselor, and this, is take a snapshot of what we have right now in terms of how it relates to the majority of the community right now. We can deal with that, with your scenario, and a case-by-case basis, and I have the flexibility and the authority to refund or suspend people's fees if that were to be issued. So what I'm saying is, I'm not suggesting that I deviate from the four corners of this contract, however, your illustration is not the norm.
Yeah.
So we will be able to address those situations case-by-case.
Yeah.
Maybe we need to tell the community that as well, if there are a number of residents that have that larger property, or they have, like, in your, in your yard, those large trees, but that's, that's not the norm, and I want to make sure that I honor your concern, but I also am really, really pointing to the fact that the majority from our, from our research, that is, that's an anomaly.
Yeah, so what I was really looking for is for clarity from, from what we've already communicated out there, for not only my benefit, because my personal situation aside, we've communicated that 30, if you have, you get 15 bags per toter, and therefore you get up to 30 bags per month if you have two toters. What we haven't communicated clearly is, as soon as you exceed 60 bags, you will be charged $2 per bag. And so just for the record and for the clarity of the people out there, I just want to make sure that we're really clear, and they don't think, oh, I can put up to 30 bags for two toters per month absolutely free, because I don't think that's what this contract says. So it's just clarifying it.
And I know, I know what you mean. Sir? Yes, yeah, and thank you for saying that too. Our customer service line, Priority has been very exceptional in this regard too. We have a customer service representative, if you recall in the past, that wasn't really always the case. So we have a customer service portal or line that a community be able to contact, and then be able to direct those directly to us to mitigate some of those, that confusion. But I understand exactly what you're saying, and I don't feel like what you're saying is unreasonable or confrontational, you just want clarity. If you look at that, 60 bags, that's quite a lot of trash, I mean, quite a lot of refuse in terms of leaves and grass, and we understand that. We're not trying to in any way, shape, or form have a perfect scenario or perfect company. What we want to do is be fair and equitable, and I think that this ask is fair and equitable, and it will put us in the best position as a city to be able to leverage our aesthetics and be able to leverage our capabilities as it relates to trash collection and then reducing the carbon imprint, because ultimately, that's what we were, we're...
Yeah, and I absolutely agree. I just, I just want it to be clear.
Absolutely, counselor, and thank you for those questions.
Can I, can I say that in this document here where you speak of the 60 bags, $2 each, as the conversation was going on, that is not the language that's in this proposal?
It's the current contract.
So you can look at that?
In the current contract. In the contract.
And because of time, we're going to need to move on. Any other questions on this?
Senator Denton?
Yes.
Concerns?
Yes, I have, I have one other question, and that is, I understand what we're doing in terms of our seniors, making sure that we monitor that situation, but I don't understand why they don't get an extra toter. We do live in a sandwich generation, and we have grandparents taking care of kids. The toters pay for themselves, so I don't understand why we, if they want to pay $4, like everybody else, why they couldn't pay $4 and get an extra toter. Specifically, when we don't have this heavy trash every month, we are putting things that we normally wouldn't put in our trash, well, I know I am, I don't know what you guys are doing, but like, I'm breaking stuff down more because I'm trying to compensate for heavy trash. Now, just two weeks ago, I had to call and say, send me another toter, because I just can't keep doing this. But I would imagine other people are doing the same thing. We're trying to compensate for not having that heavy trash, so we're trying to break stuff down and put it in our regular trash can, because we know we only have heavy trash two times a year, because there's things that can be broken down, you know, to smaller pieces that you don't have to set out. So I say all this to say, why wouldn't we offer the extra toter to seniors if they want it, and they pay the $4?
Right. Also too, Party, just the contractor as a whole, do you have a limited amount of extra toters as a whole? And so that was part of the conversation about limitation of getting that produced, and also too, the labeling and the coloring, because it was, originally it was going to be yellow and blue, and then they switched the colors around. But ultimately, it came down to efficiency. Senior households typically do not use as much trash. Now, that may change, you know, I know some households may utilize more waste than others, but as a whole, and the analysis that showed it, that we have seen, senior households do not use that as much, and that Party would have, in our opinion, would have been potentially charging us more as a whole if they have to continue to do those extra pickups for those seniors. It's about 2,000 household, granted, it is a small audience, but ultimately, it was determined by the previous administration through the contract negotiations, and that limiting or minimizing how, senior households to not having those extra, they still get the standard trash and the standard recycle.
But we don't agree with most of the things that they agreed to, which is why we're here today, and so I'm just, I just, I just think it's, I think it's unfair to say everybody can get an extra toter, but seniors, if there's a limitation, there's a limitation. That will apply regardless of whether you're a senior or not. So if, if, if the limit is 2,000, and I'm not a senior and I ask for one, I'm not going to be able to get it. But if we're only using 1,900 and a senior wants it, I don't see why they can't pay, their money is the same as my money. Why can't they pay the $4 and get the extra toter?
They can give up the discount.
The discount would just go away, because they would just pay the extra $5 instead of...
And counselor, that's, again, that's a very good, and I love that statement about a sandwich generation, because you're right.
It's true.
Yeah, it takes a village, and that's not, that's every demographic.
Yep.
Right, so I support you in that.
I think it's substantial in our city.
Yeah, it is. Here's what we're doing to remedy that. What we've done is entered into the agreement with Priority, and they are a very, very upstanding company, and what we want to do is see some performance both from the city and the company before we do any modification of contract. That's normal, typical industry standard. These contracts aren't ironclad, that gives, we have a little flexibility, but we just need to engage with them, because they're in the business of making money, yes, but we're in the business of saving money, yes, and we're in the business of using those monies and those coffers for our citizens and reinvesting back into the community. So they understand our position, but I hadn't thought about it in that context, and what we can do is, again, we were left with these things, and we don't have to go negative, it is what it is, right? So we were left with certain obligations, and what we're trying to do within the context of those obligations, find spaces and places and dialogue with people that serves us in the best interest.
I want to make this comment though, because this is real. A lot of times you'll hear these counselors, I've been on, this is my third council, and you'll hear folks sit up and say, my constituent said this and that, and I've debated if the constituents really said it, but when it comes to this trash, nothing makes anybody matter. So when you say we ain't got to go negative, guess who's going to be negative with us? You know what I mean? So that's why I just want to show, like, they don't want to hear that, and so it's, I know we got held to this, and I get that, but you also, it's just, it's just, we're in a really bad, because out of all the things people ask me about...
Trash is number one. And let me, and then let me say too, counselor, I don't want to go negative.
Yeah.
You know, because that, I, then you won't get the best out of me as it relates to that.
I will. Some go, when they go high, I go lower.
Yeah, that's fine.
So what I want to say is, Priority needs to understand how this contract was signed, and they knew there was an election going on. So I'm not sympathetic for a company out of Zionsville not to understand the politics of what's going on. I know who they are, and I know what cities they've been in, and I know where they're at. We're probably the only Democrat city they're in. So with that being said, I don't have any sympathy, because I know you talked about they're in the business of making money. You're in the business of saving the city money. I'm in the business of making sure that the citizens get the service and the quality of life that they're looking for. So that's the part that no one's advocated for, and so that's what I'm advocating for, and I know that that's what she's advocating for, and I'm sure others over here. So that voice must be heard, and if that voice ain't heard, I will be negative. And I hope that if they don't want to hear it, do something about it. Otherwise, because I don't have time to... Otherwise, because I don't have time to wait, because the reason that I'm here is to speak to the power.
Yeah, and, and I don't think that you're negative. You're very passionate and compassionate.
I'm not worried about that. I'm just telling you, I'm not gonna let it go.
Yeah, and, and I think that's valid. I think what we've tried to do is be sensitive to that, uh, that voice and be reasonable as it relates to.
You're the first person to even hear it so far. So, I don't even know, this is the first time I've been able to talk in a public state about this.
Well, thank you. Well, thank you for that.
And I'm also carrying the water.
Yeah. And I would tell the council this, that there are, there are several, uh, agreements that the city of, uh, Lawrence entered into and some of those contracts are subjective.
Right.
Um, and we understand that as a department, DPW, and we have brought that to bear. In this particular situation, what you're speaking of is, is, is true. And we've recognized that that was our outside constituents and they're at, they may act in the best interest of what is available to them, meaning the other cities that they work in, et cetera.
None of us were called to the table but one.
Yeah.
So, all this news is new and there's a reason why I wasn't called to the table.
Yeah.
And so, now I'm holding the water and it's, and I'm not really talking to you. I'm talking to the people watching me on TV because they're still watching. And so, I want them to know and be clear. And for all the citizens, this is something that was hung on our head from the prior administration. The councillors that are on it had no input, no discussion. I learned about priority becoming our provider in the, in the lift, just like everyone else. But I'm the one that's got to have my name on this bill to raise their rates. And it fit, doesn't feel good, no matter if they were here before or after, because I've been a part of administrative changes before and you get caught holding the bag when you're still here. And so, for those councillors that weren't here, you know, me, Sharon, Rick, you know, one thing me and Rick are worried about is the service of trash and heavy trash and all that stuff. So, this is a serious issue for our city.
Very serious.
So, we want to get it fixed. I know, I'm not, we don't, I'm not holding you guys responsible for the four corners. I'm just saying that those folks entered the contract knowing what was going on.
Mm-hmm.
And so, I'm not sympathetic to the folks of priority and I hope and pray that we will fight to provide the correct and the most optimal services for the citizens of Lawrence.
Enough said and that's absolutely correct councillor. Thank you for that.
Okay.
Because we agree with you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you, Mr. Lovell, and thank you, Mr. Curtis. Councillors, we will consider two motions. The first will be a motion to consider the amendment. The second will be a motion to consider a recommendation on the proposal as amended. First, the proposal amendment, do we have a motion?
Anybody else want to make?
I'm moved.
Thank you councillor Jennings.
I'll second.
Thank you councillor Giles.
We don't have our things.
We would now need to, or we would now need to do, um, take a vote, proceed with a vote. Um, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please signify by saying nay. All agree. Thank you councillors. We would now need to consider a motion to give a favorable recommendation, unfavorable recommendation, or no recommendation to the council on the proposal as amended. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Thank you councillor Jennings. Second.
Is that for favorable or favorable?
Favorable. Second.
I'll second. Oh, go ahead.
I'll second it.
Thank you councillor.
Purple.
Chrome. Uh, any discussion? Now, we, we will proceed with the vote. All those in favor, please say, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. We have a consensus. Thank you councillors. Uh, the next agenda item is all business. Is there any other business for the committee this evening? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you councillor Kramer. Second. Thank you councillor Jennings. Adjourn. Thank you.